Good evening. This meeting will come to order. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals, November 2018 meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hirsch and Ms. Valka are excused. Mr. Casey?
Here.
We are very happy to welcome you back. Mr. Dubois?
Here.
Mr. Tezola?
Here.
Ms. Ferrante?
Here.
And Mr. Soto?
Here.
Thank you.
Also present this evening are Meg Green, our Recording Secretary, Stephen Harris, our Zoning Officer, and David Sulcus, City Planner. If anyone feels that there's a member on this board that might be a conflict of interest to their application, please let us know. Otherwise, we'll start our agenda with item number one. Thank you.
Item number one, Zero Rock Lane, MBP 92/705/1K. Joseph Kubik Esquire for Joseph Arpino and Carol Arpino owners. Section 9.2.1, appeal the decision of the zoning enforcement officer in a letter of violation dated October 2, 2018.
Good evening. Can we just put that microphone a little closer to you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Joe Kubik. I'm a lawyer with Harlow Adams &amp; Friedman here in town, and I've brought an appeal of Mr. Harris's enforcement notice as to Zero Rock Lane and served on Mr. and Mrs. Joseph Arpino. The Arpinos are not here today. The Arpinos are in South Carolina for their grandson's graduation from Marine Boot Camp. That said, I've asked for this appeal, and I'm going to represent that we have been having good discussions with Mr. Harris about resolving the issue on the property. Mr. Arpino has a plan. We've discussed it again with Mr. Harris, and the goal is to remove a pile of asphalt, broken-up asphalt. The plan is to get a company out of hand called Modern Materials, who has a big machine that they can turn this material into something that is usable and that people will want so they can move it off the property. The goal is to get started in the end of November, beginning of December. Modern Materials has told Mr. Arpino, "The problem with this wet fall is that he's behind on all his other jobs." So, we anticipate, though, that before the end of the year, this is going to be done. It'll be, the property will be brought to compliance with the zoning regulations. And so, I'd like to ask for today that we postpone or continue this till the next meeting, and I'll come back and report again. If there's, that's my request.
Well, what you're actually saying is you're not really appealing his decision. You're making progress on, you're actually admitting that there are problems there that you're starting to rectify.
Well, we haven't admitted that. What we've admitted is we're willing to work with the city to comply, to try to work with Stephen Harris, to make the property, in Stephen Harris's opinion, in conformance with the zoning regulations.
Okay, so you want to postpone this because you want to, what else would you like to enter into the record?
That's simply it. We're working on it.
Any questions for this gentleman? Okay, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, Stephen Harris, Zoning Enforcement Officer. I have no objection to postponing this for another month.
Should we leave the hearing open, or should we postpone it?
You can leave it open.
Okay. Okay. All right, we'll leave this hearing open.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number two.
Item number two, 162 Kings Highway, MBP 60/740/1BD. Oscar Parente Esquire for Robert Harrington and Daryl DePaulo, appellants regarding the lot of Anastasia Blake owner. Section 9.2.1, appeal the decision of the City Planner in a free split letter dated September 18, 2018. Applicants became aware of the letter on October 22, 2018.
Good evening, everyone. Attorney Kim Coleman, I represent the applicants, Robert Harrington and Daryl DePaulo. And I have had time to review your file that's in front of you. I believe that you have it.
Excuse me, we need your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My office address is 112 Broad Street, Milford.
And if you would just move that microphone closer to you, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'm usually pretty loud.[336.19][336.19](Laughter). Oh, you're recording. Okay. Based on my reading of the file, and I don't know if the owner's counsel is present, but he did write you a letter claiming that you had no jurisdiction. And I would say you do have jurisdiction to hear this. Both Mr. Harrington and Mr. DePaulo were in constant contact with Mr. Sulcus and the Planning and Zoning members, who continually told them that they would be having a hearing and they'd be notified. This is a 50 by 100-foot lot, which, of course, could fit a one-family easily. A two individuals is a whole nother story. But they were very concerned when they had heard rumblings that they were going to put two houses there. So, Mr. Sulcus and the Planning and Zoning told them that, "Watch out for the letters. Check on our webpage, check online, and you'll be notified of the hearing." Mr. Harrington found out about what had occurred with the free split in October, when the UI electrician showed up to disconnect the electricity to 162. He immediately went down and talked to Mr. Sulcus and Planning and Zoning on the 22nd, actually, it might have even been the 23rd. And Mr. Sulcus basically told him, "Too bad. I get to make that decision." But he never notified them, and he absolutely, both Mr. Harrington and Mr. DePaulo are local builders in Milford. They are known to everybody in Planning and Zoning and the Building Department. So, I would claim you do have jurisdiction, because they didn't receive any notice until, we'll say, at least October 22nd, and they filed their appeal on the 23rd. Under our regulations, they get 15 days, so I would say that they were in the 15 days for getting notice. Do you want me to continue? I think you're going to have to decide a couple things here. I don't, you know.
Go ahead. I was just, the dates on the letter that you're stating.
The date on the letter, there was no letter. There was just a notice in the newspaper put in by the owner's attorney, which was, and I don't even know if they have to do that. If it's a legal free split, I don't even think there has to be notice. But that notice was put in there by the attorney for the owner on 9/18/2018. Yet, my clients were never notified to October 22nd, and they immediately filed an appeal. The basis for the appeal is on several levels. I've been in contact with the borough of Woodmont, and I know they have no say in this. They do have a say in how they're run, but they don't have a say in what you do. I also did some research on my own, because I've never heard of a BD-1, and I was on the Board of Woodmont for over 10 years, and I'd never heard of this, and a free split. I actually went to the Planning and Zoning site and went to their interactive web GIS, and it pulls up the house, and it states on the front page that it's a zoning code BD. The assessor's map has it as a BD. When I originally looked at the zoning map that was online last week, alls they had was BDs. It's been updated now to show a BD-1. But when I worked, and I told them that it was an older map, I guess, because none of us had ever heard of a BD-1. Both the borough and my clients thought this was a BD. And I understand under a BD-1, it can be a free split. But then again, there is a lot of discretion for the Planning and Zoning Board and the The regulation says you may allow it. And the issue we have is, this lot is 50 by 100. It borders New Haven Avenue and Beach Avenue, the side that's away from the beach. Sidewalks on the front and the side. Very, very small lot. And I've been trying to do some research, and I can't find anything, and this is where we always have to ask you for guidance. There's sidewalks, there's like a 10-foot easement for sidewalks on both the front and the side, which would reduce this property to 40 feet, which would not allow it to be free split. But I can't find any current law as to whether the sidewalk detracts from the 50 feet, because the regulation doesn't have anything in it. So, basically, what you're looking at now is 50 feet, 10 feet for the sidewalk on Beach Avenue, leaving that lot 15 feet and the other one 25, because the lots have to be 25 by 100. I don't know how you can build a 15-foot house. I've looked at their map briefly, and it looks to go into that 10 feet. I don't know if they're trying to get rid of their sidewalks, but there are sidewalks there at this point. The regulation doesn't allow me to figure this out. It just says you can do it if it's 50 feet. And I was doing some research before I got here, and I wish I had called the Public Works. I would have gotten a better answer. And I understand in Milford that, though the city takes a 10-foot easement, it's still private property when it's a private owner versus the city. But I just don't know how it relates to this free split, because the requirement, it has to be 25 feet for each of the properties to be split. But if you include the sidewalks, now you're down to 40 feet, which makes it ineligible for a free split. Maybe you guys have more information? I just don't know. And I'll continue to research it. If you want to give me some additional time to get you case law, I will. They just spoke to me a couple days ago, so I'm a little under the gun here. But if you would like to give me additional time, I will find law that will be guiding as to the interpretation of the zoning reg, because it's really not clear as to what do we do with this 10 feet that has a sidewalk on it and has a city easement. Does it still mean it's 25 feet? Does it mean it's only 15 feet? And I really think it's an issue that has to be addressed.
Well, we could probably ask the City Planner that question later, so, I mean, what you're also asking us right now is to give you more time, so, you know, so, as a Board right now, maybe we can also discuss whether or not we want to move forward with this right now and just end it right now. Giving you more time, you're asking for more time to research things.
What would be easier for you for me to do? I can make, I can do all the discussions with that.
It doesn't matter to us right now. We can hear this out right now, this evening, and make a decision. And, you know, if you're requesting more time, we can take that into consideration. So, why don't you tell us exactly what you would like?
I would like a little more time to look at what other municipalities have done, because based on my research, just about every municipality allows these free splits. I'd like to look at what other municipalities do when there is a sidewalk that is part of the 25-foot that's required under a fee split.
Have you approached the city at all? Have you come into any of the offices and asked those questions?
I didn't have time.
Is that what you would do?
Yes, I would.
If we leave this hearing open?
Yes, I would talk to our City Planners, Public Works, and see if I can find something in state law. There's very few state cases, because I did do research on that, on the free split. But I, there's got to be something out there that would give guidance to this issue.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
In the interest of fairness, I think the Board should listen to what the City Planner would have to say in response.
Okay, and then we'll make a decision whether or not we, we'll leave this open. We don't want to move forward and have a hearing from other people, any other comments right now. We can just use this attorney's statement and our City Planners.
You can, you can listen to any citizen or anybody else who cares to speak.
Well, I mean, you know, we can listen to the City.
My only caution was, if you're inclined to keep the hearing open, first hear everybody out before you make any decision.
Okay.
I'm having difficulty.
Well, that was my point. I mean, you know, if we listen to everyone this evening, then we'll have that on record and then decide whether or not to keep the hearing open, or we could end it right now with, you know, just David Sulcus making a statement. Either way, it's, you know, we can have it on record, so we don't want everybody coming back again next month saying the same exact thing.
Well, you can't, you can't shut the public off from comment.
Okay, yeah, I'm not trying to do that.
In for a penny, in for a pound. You've got to listen to everybody.
All right, that's what we'll do, then. We'll, any other, anyone else coming up speaking on this appeal? You can come forward, and that's what we'll do. We'll listen to you right now, get some of this information.
My name is David Yannick. I live at 162 Beach Avenue. I'm around the corner from this property. I also took a look at the, how's that? Is that better? I also took a look at the zoning regs and am puzzled a little bit about the fact that there was no mailing related to this property and that the exceptional problem or issue that makes for a zoning application exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship, I'm just not sure what exists here with this particular property. So, I'm in attendance tonight to learn, and I'm certainly looking forward to any other testimony that comes before the Board tonight, because I, like the counsel for the Harringtons, have a hard time understanding how two dwellings can fit on that small piece of property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking on this appeal? No one else?
Good evening. I am the owner with my wife of the property next door, 160 Kings Highway, and I, along with Mr. Yannick, also disagree with the decision to do a free split. I don't understand the hardship when the property does sit a single-family home easily, and all properties in that neighborhood do, even though we live in a zone that is not necessarily conforming to the rest of the city because of its location. So, we see not only the disruption of the neighborhood, of the traffic, also of building on a property line, which can bring detrimental to my property, where a foundation will have to be dug, spoils will have to come in, other things will be done, you know, carpenters will be there on my property working on her home. I submitted a letter to everybody available here. I have a copy of it, if you would like, explaining my position, and I just feel that our voices need to be heard.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else speaking? Anyone else appealing? Okay, Mr. Sulcus?
Okay, first, let me clarify some things that I think led to some confusion. First of all, the attorney was correct. I did meet several times with the neighbors. They came to the office. And at the time that that occurred, the application was submitted at that time as a re-subdivision, which, you know, anybody can apply to do and then ultimately would be brought to the Planning and Zoning Board. But also, under state law, if a property has not been divided, changed, altered in any way since the creation of the subdivision regulations in 1929, a property owner could provide some information to the office in accordance with state statute and ask for what's called a free split. So, originally, the attorney and the property owner for 162 came to us with a re-subdivision application. After that was submitted, they did their research and found, oh gee, they actually qualify for a state split, I'm sorry, a free split, which can happen, as you heard, in any municipality in the state, as long as it follows the state statutes, which this one did. So, in their particular case, for a free split, they have to show that they can divide the property, and then the end result of that division is a fully conforming, basically subdivision, or in this case, two parcels, which they did by submitting surveys. Those surveys showed two fully conforming properties in terms of its length and its width, which may or may not include sidewalks. It doesn't matter, because they presented surveys that showed the property that they own is 50 feet wide, 100 feet deep. That's all we need. And that, we then check against the BD-1 zoning regulation, which, in this case, it met. So, that clarifies that. It qualifies for a free split. So, that's issue number one. Issue number two is, this is the wrong venue to hear this. I acted on behalf of the Planning Board as Executive Secretary. Everything was done under the statutes regarding subdivisions. You heard about zoning regulations tonight from people. Has nothing to do with the zoning regulations. I can't be appealed, doing something as the Executive Secretary for the Planning and Zoning Board. That would be tantamount to you acting and overturning a Planning and Zoning Board decision, which you can't do. When a decision is made on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Board, the applicant can appeal to the Superior Court, and that's, again, by statute. And also, as spelled out in the statutes, when a decision is made, whether the Planning and Zoning Board does it, or someone does it administratively for them, the statutes say that it could be advertised, and if the city doesn't advertise it, then the applicant can do it, even if the city advertises it, the applicant can still advertise it, just to give public notice and start that appeal period. So, in this case, after the letter was drafted, and it's, the applicant's right, 162 had a right to the free split under the state statutes. There's no compelling reason not to give it to them, because they met that requirement. But after I gave them that letter, they published in the New Haven Register on 9/18/2008, a notice. And that is, that's the statutory notice to the public that this action took place. From that date, anyone in the public who read the legal notices has the ability to appeal that decision to the Superior Court. They have 15 days. They had until October 3, 2018, to do that. That wasn't done. This application to your Board, which, again, I believe is the wrong venue by statute, was submitted on October 23, far beyond an expired October 3 date. So, constructive notice was given. The free split is legal, and, again, by any stretch of the regulations, the statutes, this is the wrong venue for this. The venue should have been the Superior Court, and that wasn't done.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Coleman?
Yes, if I can respond briefly.
Okay. So, did he give you any information that you were looking for just now?
No. No. And I would just like to correct a couple things. I understand that Mr. Sulcus, as the City Planner and the Executive Board of the, Executive Secretary of the P&amp;Z, can administratively allow a free split, based on his understanding of the regulations. Doesn't mean it's correct. This issue of the sidewalk really affects whether it's 40 feet or 50 feet. And if it's 40 feet, he's wrong giving them a free split. I really think this particular issue has to be addressed, and not just by Mr. Sulcus. It's a, think about it. Woodmont, a 15-foot house, and we're talking line to line. And then you've got another house on the other 25 lot. I don't think that's what anybody had in mind when they did this. So, I would disagree with Mr. Sulcus as to, he can't be appealed here, because if it's not an accurate and rightful free split, he can't do it. And he hasn't addressed the issue of the sidewalk and how it affects the 50-foot frontage. That's my big concern. I'm thinking a 15-foot house, line to line? How does that fit into Woodmont? I mean, I know some of them are small, but 15 feet, you can barely turn around in. And I don't believe this is the wrong venue, because I do believe somebody has to look at what Mr. Sulcus is doing. And the people that look at what Mr. Sulcus is doing are you guys, are the Board that we elected here. As to constructive notice, that's a legal term. Case law has said time and time again, you have to give people notice. It wasn't like these people came out of the thin air. Mr. Harrington and Mr. DePaulo are both local builders and are familiar with everybody down there, and they knew, Mr. Sulcus knew, that they were interested in what was going on. He could have picked up the phone and said, "Listen, they've applied for a free split. I'm granting it. Your appeal runs now." He didn't do it. He didn't say anything. They found out by accident. I don't think that's how the city of Milford works. I think fairness has always been part of Milford's, and I've been here for, I don't know, a long time. We've always been pretty fair to each other. So, again, I would ask for a short continuance, so I can continue to do research regarding this sidewalk issue and how it affects the determination if a free split can be granted.
Well, I have a couple of things I just wanted to say to you.
(Inaudible).
Yeah. Any questions for this lady? Any questions? It was stated that there was a letter out on 9/18.
There was.
And it was noticed. I mean, you had also said that you were looking for a personal kind of thing, where the City Planner would call people. I don't think that's one of the practices that they ever do. So, our problem as a Board here right now is we cannot, we don't have, we don't have the jurisdiction to overturn a decision that was made by the Planning and Zoning Board. The notice was put out there, unfortunately, the notice was put out there, and no one appealed it within that 15 days, and the appeal would have gone to court, not to this Board. So, we do, you know, there's no way we can act on this Board to, you know, overturn his decision.
Can I?
I'm sorry to say that to you. I wish there was, but, not wish there was, but I don't know what other way to tell you. You know, we just have to follow procedure.
Okay. I just want to clarify something. There was no letter sent to any of the neighbors. It was a small posting in the New Haven Register. There was no letter or communication to any of the residents who had talked to Mr. Sulcus or anybody at Planning and Zoning. And I understand your point of view. The court might find it differently.
Well, if we.
But if you're going to decide this on no jurisdiction, we will just need something like that in writing, so that we can go to the next level.
Well, if we were to overturn his decision, then our Board would probably be appealed, so.
You know, I.
We don't have the jurisdiction to do it. We just don't.
I disagree with the legal analysis. In fact, if you read the attorney's lawyer, he wrote a letter to you guys challenging the jurisdiction, based only on time. That notice was given in the 15 days. He never said or challenged that you even had the ability to hear. He never said or challenged that you even had the ability to hear this. And I understand that's a question for legal. I maintain that you do have jurisdiction, because I don't believe what Mr. Sulkas did was to apply the rules correctly to a free split. So if he didn't apply the rules correctly to a free split, somebody's got to look at his decision, and that would be the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anything that comes out of Planning and Zoning comes to you guys. Our claim is, he did not follow the regulations as required, and thus, this is an illegal free split, and somebody needs to make a decision on it.
Okay. Any other comments from the board members? No?
If the court, I mean, if the committee is going to give me more time, I'd like more time, and I'll address the issue of the legal redress as required under Connecticut statutes for zoning appeals, because they're very clear what can be done and what can't be done.
Board members, what do you think about? Do you want to make a decision on this this evening, or do you think there's more time? Do you want to give her more time to research things?
I understand the point she's making. I mean, I understand the point that she's making, and the only way to determine if she's right or wrong would be more time. I'm okay with more time.
Even if we give her more time, legally, we're not supposed to make a, we can't make a decision on this?
I mean, I think, given the point that she's making, we might, and I think only more time and more research will tell.
Mr. Sota?
I agree with Sarah. Give her more time. I mean, we always give people more time. I mean, let's not shut her right off, so give her 30 days to see what she comes back with.
Any other comments? Mr. Casey? Your thoughts? Mr. Dubois?
I'm okay with giving more time.
Okay. I'm like the only one that's not in favor of that, but if you want to make a motion to do that, that's what we can do. Well, just to continue? To continue this, Mr. Harris, or we just leave it open, or?
Well, the board can close the hearing and vote. You can keep it open for next month.
Okay. You're all in favor of keeping it open? Okay?
I am.
All right. Well, this will be held up until next month. Okay?
Item number three, 733 East Broadway, MBP 22/474/17R5. Jeff Adelino, agent for Bill Fock, owner, very section 3.1.4.1, west side yard setback to 6.5 feet where 10 feet required, 6.3.2 expansion of a non-conforming structure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead. It's all yours.
My name is Ron D'Elio. I'm the architect on the project. I live at 69 Saskus Drive, Milford, Connecticut. It's also where my office is. Some of the information regarding the house was issued in the administrative summary from the Land Use Department. I don't know if I have to repeat that or not. I won't repeat it unless you don't have access to that. I'm not sure how that works.
I don't think you have to. You just go over what your intentions are right now, what you're proposing for this property.
The, we're asking the ZBA to allow us to extend a existing setback that was previously documented for a house that was on the property previously. The house has been taken down that had that variance granted. The house that the variance was granted to was taken down. It suffered storm damage repeatedly, so it didn't make sense to keep fixing it and fixing What we're trying to do is hold that setback line on the western side of the property and just, we would like to build a rectangle instead of a very confused house with a lot of corners and follow the footprint of the existing house that was there. So because of having to put the house up on piers and bring it above the floodplain, it makes sense to make a rectangle. And also, for the neighborhood, it makes sense to kind of follow the line of the neighborhood. Okay, the house is, so the original house was removed. This application is for a new house to go on the property. Right now, there's nothing on the property. We are not encroaching at all on the east side setback. We will be six feet from the property line on the east side where five feet is required. This will conform with the zoning regulation on that side of the house. Also, on that side of the house, previously, the house went right up to the property line within inches of the property line. So now it will be set back, and neighbors can view the water. We will also have better separation for fire safety from the neighbor. The front will maintain a setback of 10.7 on the western corner and 18.2 on the eastern corner. The angle of the front wall maintains a pattern found along this portion of East Broadway. If you look at the site plan, you'll see what I call a sawtooth-type pattern of the houses, creating like a pattern that is best described as sawtooth. So we're maintaining that pattern, viewed from bird's eye. Same thing goes with the rear of the property. We're also maintaining the sawtooth pattern that you see in the neighborhood. The property is divided into two flood zones, coastal AE13 in the front and the VE13 flood zone in the rear. Our intention is to keep the structure of the house in the coastal AE zone, and the deck will be in the VE zone. So that's for, the owner just feels more comfortable of having the house in the A-zone. And that also, the house will be safer for the owner. It also kind of shaped the house for us, so we kind of set that as a boundary. We didn't want to go further than that. And so, we needed the width of the house, because he wanted to get two cars under the house and a front door, plus because of the flood zone, we need these big, heavy concrete piers. So that kind of set the width of the house, which is 31 feet. So we're, on the western side, we're going all the way over to where the house was. On the eastern side, we're bringing the house back from the property line. I mentioned, there's, two cars can park underneath. In fact, if there's a big holiday weekend, we could probably fit four cars underneath. The lower level will have breakaway walls, and that's required in the flood zone. And then outside, in the front yard, we can also get some more cars off the street and park in the driveway. The width of the house, okay, cover that. Above the lower level with the breakaway walls, we have two floors of living space and an unfinished attic for storage and mechanical equipment. And for the rainwater for the property will be directed into the infiltration system that's proposed on the site plan. We'll have gutters running along the two sides of the house. That's pretty much all I have. Be happy to answer questions, or if Jeff Adelino, the applicant, wants to add anything.
I don't think I have any questions. I think you did an excellent job of presenting your application. I had some questions forming, but you were answering them at the same time. So the house will be actually better on the lot than the previous footprint that was there, so. Anything for this gentleman? No? Anyone else? Anyone else speaking on this appeal? Are you speaking on the, I'm sorry, not on the appeal, on this application? Are you speaking on this application in favor of, or?
I have a request.
Okay. So are you in favor of the application or against?
She needs to come to the microphone.
Okay. Why don't you come up, why don't you come up to the microphone, please? Okay. Because I was asking everyone in favor to speak and anyone against to speak. So you are either way right now? You'll have to state what you're...
Okay. My name's Olive Harbor. I live at 9 Cooper Avenue, and I happen to love my neighbors, so I'm not here to fight. But there's a request I got in the mail that said you wanted to move to expand the east, the west side from 6.5 to 10. That's the only view I have of the ocean right now.
Ma'am, you have to talk into that microphone, please.
Sorry.
Did you get her name and address?
I just have a very small view of the ocean now. When I moved there 16 years ago, I had great views. So this expansion would cut that little view I have from my kitchen window, and I was wondering if there's any way for us to work that out so I could still have a view. That's my request.
Well, as he had stated before, you know, if you saw the original plan, the other, the original house that was there was twisted more, it was actually on the property line.
Oh, okay. I couldn't hear everything.
So if it was built the same way, it would take up, yeah. We're going like this here.
Okay.
Just like all the other houses, before it was crooked.
Yes.
So whether you're on the other side of the street or whatever, I'm thinking right now that, you know, it's going to, it's a better balance on the lot than it previously was. And one of the questions I was even going to ask this gentleman, he mentioned this, you know, we always have to think about safety space between houses for emergencies and all, so it is balanced pretty well on the lot, I think.
Can I just show him something and ask him something, because I don't understand everything? Here's, this is, the house you're going to build is behind this one. And so this is my view from my house. I live right over here. So is that, view is going to be all reduced, eliminated?
Do you want to see our plan? We have a plan up here if you'd like to come take a look at it.
Please, thank you.
And any questions you have? You can talk to the mic. You can look at hers, right here. Say, Sarah will explain to you.
Thank you.
What's going on.
Thank you.
So this was, this gray line here was the original house.
Yes.
This is the proposed house. So it's coming out just as wide on this side. It's just extending more towards the street, and it's coming not as wide as the original house was over there.
Oh, okay.
It's coming into the lot.
Oh, okay. Now I see it.
See that? You're right over there in the property line.
So I don't know if your view is over this way or over this way, but...
You are on the other side of the street? Where are you?
My view is, okay, let's try.
You're across the street from it?
Yes, I'm across the street.
Yeah.
That's my view from my kitchen, yeah.
So the original house came out to here.
Okay.
And so the new house is just going to come to the same width.
Okay.
But just further up towards the front of the lot.
Oh, okay.
So you'd still be able to look past it.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So you're in favor. For our record, you're in favor.
Good.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we asked, so I don't know if there's anyone here opposed. There might be, but I don't see them, so. Any questions? Any questions before we close this? No? Okay. All right, this hearing's closed. Okay. We'll have a decision for you shortly. Okay? Thank you. Okay? I thought his presentation was good. He explained everything. Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve. Approval is based on the hardship of the size of the lot.
We motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Casey? Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It passes. New business, approval of the calendar. Meg put a calendar into our envelopes for next year. I don't know if anybody's looked at it to see if there's any problems like an Election Day, Veterans Day, St. Patrick's Day, what's that called? Valentine's Day. So take a look at your calendars, or are you ready to accept it as proposed?
The, this board did not seem to have conflict with Election Day. It was the P&amp;Z board, so...
Okay. You want to approve the calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? None. Okay. Old business? Do we have any old business? No old business. How about a staff update? Anything going on? No? Acceptance of the minutes from October 9 hearing? Did you look through the minutes? Everything's okay?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Applications for next month? Well, we have two hearings open. So we have two hearings open next month, so we know what we're doing there, plus whatever else comes along.
You've got to be next.
Okay. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. This meeting's adjourned.